Alrighty, it's 5:02 PM. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll begin with a quick roll call. Mr. Barton.
Present.
Mr. Fresh Air. Dr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Chapman.
Here.
Dr. Benny.
Here.
Alright, if everybody stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Mr. Fresh Air is present. Alright, we have no delegations at this time. We have nothing under reports. So that'll move us into the consent agenda and we'll start with the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 25th, 2025.
May I make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 25th, 2025?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 25th, 2025. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention, motion carries. Alright, next we have approval of the minutes of the special meeting of August 20th, 2025.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of August 20th, 2025.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the special meeting of August 20th, 2025. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention, motion carries. Alright, now we have bills for payment with request to pay subsequent bills through 9/12/2025. Ginger.
Okay, so I do have one thing to point out on the bill of 2%. It's batch 001. This was typed on the PO and failed to delete it. It says final pay for Wayans and Schreiber. That is not their final pay. We don't pay out the architect until the final contract for the contractor. And we're getting close on both things, but we're not there yet, so it shouldn't have said final pay. And we're asking for subsequent bills because this meeting is really early and we have holiday. So we are afraid that there's stuff that's going to come in. There's already been stuff this weekend coming in that we need to address before we can get back.
Make a motion to approve bills for payment and approve paying the subsequent bills that may arise through 9/12/25.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the bills for payment as presented and approve paying subsequent bills that may arise through 9/12/2025. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention, motion carries. Alright, we are now under new business and we'll begin with approval of academic honesty policy. Dr. Benny.
Policy 5505 has been out on comment for 30 days. This is one that we actually delayed that process until we had some assurances that things were built into this, that the board would like to see. One being AI not being the tool that detects AI and our programs that we have have been utilized so far. We haven't had any problems with that. But what it does is it identifies the history that our computer systems are on in real time and teachers can see that kind of live update. It also put a stipulation in there that the review of any academic honesty concerns could be appealed to the superintendent's office where then we could utilize our programs from here to do the same thing to make sure that students' histories we were not clogged up with the use of AI and so forth. We've given teacher guidance like we said, so the things that were concerns were built into the policy and it's been out on comment without any comments for 30 days.
Make a motion to approve the academic honesty policy as presented following the 30-day review.
Sorry about that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the academic honesty policy as presented following the 30-day review. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention, motion carries. Alright, on to approval of change order number five for the Gummer County Elementary School Storage Building HVAC. Dr. Benny.
This is a change order for us to be able to use some district funds to cover the cost. We plan on installing using change order HVAC in the in the storage building. There's a there's pretty lengthy lead time on that, so we'd kind of like to get started on that if we can. And of course, it is seeking a motion to approve change order number five and to use up to $5,000 in district funds on top of the funds that are already in contingency that we plan to use to install the HVAC in Gummer County Elementary School Storage Building.
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the superintendent's recommendation to approve change order number five and use up to $5,000 in district funds on top of the funds in the contingency to install HVAC in the Gummer County Elementary School Storage Building. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention, motion carries. Alright, we're going to out-of-state field trip request. Dr. Benny.
Well, this is a rewards trip that we've kind of went to Plan B on. When we did our general summit of awards, we polled the students and some of them said that they would like a trip to Kennywood. However, when when we get to into the fall and thinking that we could go to Kennywood, Kennywood closes down at their daytime operations and only operates in the evening time this time of year. So we put on there a couple options trying to get in either or. Either taking the kids to Great Wolf Lodge, which is a doable drive, or Kings Island, both of them in Mason, Ohio. And utilizing enough funds that would cover the cost of either or trip. We don't know exactly, but we'd like to get on scheduling that to try to get a rewards trip because we're behind. We thought we were going to go to Kennywood and we're not able to go to Kennywood.
So this would be an overnight trip?
No, no, this is.
That's just your gap, so.
Yeah, they would depart 7:00 AM, return at 11:00 PM.
Oh, so anywhere between September 9th and November 21st.
We got to work with whoever we can get in.
How many students are you?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I'd have to look. It's a it's a different percentage for each grade, but I'm guessing it'll be 60 or 80 students or something like that. It's going to be quite a few students.
I make a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip request for GCHS students to attend either Kings Island or Great Wolf Lodge as a reward for scoring mastery on the West Virginia General Summit of Assessment.
Second.
Alright, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the out-of-state field trip request for Gummer County High School students to attend either Kings Island or Great Wolf Lodge as a reward for scoring mastery on the West Virginia General Summit of Assessment. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention, motion carries. Alright, proclamation to celebrate Freedom Week. Dr. Benny.
I want to try to read this proclamation. It's in a font that's really hard to read. In Gummer County Schools, West Virginia, whereas Board of Education will act in compliance with West Virginia State Code 18-2-9. Now therefore, our Board of Education will declare the week of September 15th through the 19th, Celebrate Freedom Week. We encourage our social studies teachers to develop lesson plans to educate our students about the sacrifices made for freedom and the founding of this country and the values on which this country was founded. We ask that Constitution Day on September 17th be observed the instruction in our classroom. In witness whereof, we sign this proclamation as President of the Gummer County Board of Education and Superintendent of the Gummer County Board of Education. Now therefore, we, the Board of Education of Gummer County, do hereby proclaim the week of September 15th, 2025, as Celebrate Freedom Week. And of course, it has a signature. I recommend making a motion to approve the proclamation and declare September 15th through the 19th as Celebrate Freedom Week.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the superintendent's recommendation to approve the proclamation and declare September 15th through the 19th as Celebrate Freedom Week. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion?
No, I think that's great, though.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention, motion carries. Alright, we have no old business, so that'll take us to personnel and we'll start maybe with the personnel agenda. There it is. Go ahead, Dr. Benny.
Extracurricular recommendations. Tanya Wine, Head Mini Titan Cheerleading Coach. Rebecca Chesser, Math Literacy Tutor, Gummer County Elementary School. Leslie Campbell, Literacy Tutor, Gummer County Elementary School. Alicia Schaefer, Mathematics Tutor, Gummer County Elementary School. Crystal Smith, Program Coordinator, After School, Gummer County Elementary School. Robin Roberts, Healthy Choices Tutor, Gummer County Elementary School. Lori McCord Cook, After School, Gummer County Elementary School. Ronnie Fesmeyer, After School Tutor, Gummer County High School. And Crystal Conrad, After School Tutor, Gummer County High School.
Make a motion to approve the extracurricular portion of the personnel agenda.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded to approve the extracurricular portion of the personnel agenda. Any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention, motion carries. Alright, we're going to prior service credit.
Prior service credit.
Angela Snyder, two years' credit.
Yeah.
Sorry, I clicked off extracurricular. Make a recommendation to approve Angela Snyder for her prior service credit of two years for Gummer County Schools.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to accept the superintendent's recommendation to approve Angela Snyder's prior service credit for two years of credit. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention, motion carries. Alright. We'll move to approval of supervisory aides for 2025-2026.
Supervisory aides, I'm making recommendation for the 25-26 school year include Barbara Nielsen, Gummer County Elementary School. Alexa Klappka, Gummer County Elementary School. Diane Montgomery, Gummer County Elementary School. Tammy Loudon, Gummer County Elementary School. Tanya Talbert, Gummer County Elementary School. Tammy Smith, Gummer County Elementary School. Luanne Drake, Gummer County Elementary School. Leslie Turner, Gummer County Elementary School. Angela Snyder, Gummer County Elementary School. Cora Persinger, Gummer County High School. Karen Miller, Gummer County Elementary School. Teresa Skinner, Gummer County Elementary School. Victoria Gordon, Gummer County Elementary School. Deborah Shiflett, Gummer County Elementary School. Stacy Stonaker, Gummer County Elementary School. Robin Roberts, Gummer County Elementary School. Brittany C, Gummer County Elementary School. Emily Hoyt, Gummer County Elementary School. And Chelsea Jenkins, Gummer County High School.
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded to approve the supervisory aides 2025-2026 on the personnel agenda. Is there any just further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention, motion carries. Alright, we'll move on to special education, math, three-step increases. And at this time, I'll turn the gavel over to Vice President Fresh Air, as I have a family relation in that list.
Alright, House Bill 206 provided a three-step increase for math and special ed teachers by allowing them to count three additional years of experience towards their salary schedule.
Okay.
This increase is intended to encourage more teachers to work in those critical areas. In addition, House Bill 4893 stated that teachers who provide math instruction in their certified area study for at least 60% of the time will also be considered to have three additional years of experience for their salary purpose. Salary schedule purposes. The following personnel are recommended and approved by the Superintendent for Gummer County Schools to receive these increases. And I'm making the recommendation to the board to accept these. Corey Grog, Stacy Butler, Crystal Conrad, Natalie White, Caroline Tenel, Tina Foster, Katrina Frederick Howes, Michaela Moore, Amber Fraser, Morgan Allen, Melissa Jones, Taylor Somerville, Leslie Campbell, Jacob Persinger, Tamara Moore, Alicia Schaefer, Rebecca Chesser, Anne McGowan, Aven McHenry, Crystal Smith, Anetta Huffman, Leanne McIntyre Smith, Heather Ferris, and Tanya Stu.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Carries. Call him in.
Cody! Okay, so that finishes up personnel. We have nothing under continuous improvements, so that'll lead us to the superintendent's update. Dr. Benny.
Just got a few quick things. We had a good training this past weekend. We will hopefully be able to implement all the things that we learned in professional development as a board. We have Gate coming up next week. We have a pre-focus meeting, so our accountability team will be out and and walking through and working with teacher staff, students, administrators on how we can improve our schools. And that'll be, you know, a couple weeks after that initial meeting. We do have some data that can be shared. Next meeting, we have some initial benchmark data that we've obtained. And we'll have that hopefully ready for our next meeting so we can see where our students are at with test scores at the beginning of the year. And other than that, we'd like to provide an update on our facility usage. One other quick thing is we'd like to have a special meeting for our finance. It's called Ginger, our end-of-year financial approval. So we'd like to have that on the 29th of this month. So we'd like to get that lined out. If you guys can let me know if that's okay. But other than that, you know, we've walked through classrooms last week. It was really good as far as student engagement. Cell phone usage has made a big difference, but the schedule change, I think there's a lot of urgency going to a block schedule to teach. And there was a lot of good instruction and hopefully we'll be able to start seeing that. I don't know how much we'll see at the beginning of this year's benchmark, but by mid-year benchmark, we should be able to really, really be able to see the impacts of that. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Fraser. He's going to give you an update on our building projects. We're nearing completion on a couple of those.
I thought I could start with the storage building. If you take one pass around, I just printed off some pictures. You can get those online, all documented, Ginger, myself. And I thought I'd just take you around the building real quick.
Sweet.
That's my buddy. Lucky there, they didn't make it.
That first picture, the very first picture, that's what you'd see from like the parent, from the front of the school. That's what the end of the building looks like. Then obviously the second picture in between the building. Lee Rager built, they were really good to us right there in the middle. That would be a grass area where you see the rock. We had some extra rock left over, so they cleaned that up. And I just think for molding purposes, we were all becoming more grass upon the buildings. And they did that noise control for just with some leftover rock. The third one is the back of the building, so that's towards the river. And then the fourth one is towards the nursing home. That's the side of the nursing home. You see, it is pretty tight there. That might be something we have to keep there with the brush and the and the tree line there, but that's that's it, side towards the nursing home. And then the last one is just kind of a picture, I thought it was a decent picture of what we have inside the building there. Nothing fancy, nothing fancy, just a just a block, still where to build it. But we were thrilled with where we're going with it and how it's going to help us out. Right now, currently, we're about 95% complete on that project. Some of the work to be left. The electrician should be here on Wednesday, should be on the site Wednesday and finish up the electrical work. They believe they'll be able to finish Friday on the first of the week to finish up third portion of the electrical work. Gutters are not in yet. About two weeks ago, they were told two weeks for the gutters. So we're about the timetable that gutters should be showing up and we get the gutters installed. We also still, they owe us the door cords, the hardware on the doors, and then the painting of the doors. And then with your all's approval tonight, like Dr. Benny alluded to with that HVAC system, we are about a seven to eight week lead time on getting the system in. I did already, after you guys approved, I texted contractor and our architects, let them know that's approved so we can move on as quick as we can because we're going to be close to winter in that, what that's going about. I did talk to the contractor today and he told me that as soon as he got the system in, they would do the work on that. Because there wouldn't be any delay. The delay is just waiting on the on the system to get in. He did tell me that's just going to be two or three days work. That's not a major deal to put that in for us. So that's kind of the storage building. We'll work with Mr. Bryce. I know he's thought a lot about it. I do think he's going to have to set kind of a priority system. I know, you know, my list for some of the things we've been written up, some of our fire marshal reports, our BRIM, our BRIM inspectors, some things in the hallway, whether it be chairs, the blocks, the tables, some things in some rooms that that we're using as storage, which maybe we should be. So those items are going to be taken care of first. And then I do hope there'll be some shelving put in and maybe some teachers will have some space. I'm not saying it's going to be a ton of space, but I'm hoping they will have some space in the building. But he will have to kind of, again, Mrs. Harshorn, work on that priority system of how how we're going to utilize the building. And again, the thought process first, let's take care of all the items that show up on any report. And let's get that storage stuff taken care of and then we'll go further. We were really nervous when we first saw the footer pool, that man, this is thinking, I'm going to go do some reading. You know, it's 24 by 54, which is a decent sized building.
20.
Next to our huge school, it looked very, very small with the four footers. But I'm happy to say it definitely looks a lot bigger now. I'm going to step in it. So I I do think it's going to fulfill one of the biggest needs we had and appreciate your all's support in it. Anything on the storage building? Any questions, anything?
No, it looks good.
And do appreciate that approval of the HVAC. We originally have something to be cut. We do have a maintenance guy right now, late duty, light duty, our main HVAC guy. So to get that work done in the time of the matter, we appreciate your support on that tonight. At the high school, we do, we're getting ready to wrap up the high school cooler freezer project. I didn't bring any pictures to it yet. But it's, it's cool. But we, so partial completion has been given there, which which we're about 98% complete on that project. The only things we're working on right now are punch list items. And that's us walking through the building, the architects walking through the building, the contractor walking through, walking through the project, saying, hey, this needs fixed, this needs whatever. So the punch list has been created. They are almost completed with that. A couple of things I know that they need to still complete. Only the second freezer that we were able to go back and get, we call it the USDA freezer, back where the cooks park, on that side where cooks park. There was a three-inch conduit that met right at the roof of that. So that that can pose us a little issue with roofing of how we're going to do that. But we're going to get flashing over that. That work, we're still, it needs to be completed. So that's one there. There's a little bit of painting on the inside that needs to match up. They're having trouble matching up with what our cooks, with what our cooks picked out of Hardman's. So we just need to get them down at Hardman's and match up the paint, but a little painting on the inside. Our cooks, and I know Dr. Benny's up there a lot, our cooks are thrilled. They're thrilled with the project. It's going to make their lives so much, so much better. They have more freezer space, more coolest space. On the outside, turning that outside freezer, again, back in the back where the cooks park, turning that freezer, creating that doorway where they're not going outside in the weather, they're not going to be going outside in the winter to go to the freezer. Yeah. I mean, it's really going to make our cook, our cooks' lives a lot better. We put them in a way better situation with this project, so they are thrilled. And another little add on, I'll tell you just to make sure everybody knows, you probably are aware, both freezers are now on a generator. And then we were also able to add our gym lights. And I had been in that gym at full capacity when when the lights went out. And it would have been nice to be able to have the lights on. So that's a little part of this project that we did. We did have an issue, one little issue in the project where they had dug out down into the varsity girls locker room. So on the safety side of the gym, on the back side, towards your, towards your back of the building, that locker room, it did get a little water in it. Now, that carpet was old and that carpet was wasn't the best anyways. We did work through that. And they just installed that carpet last week and it came out great. It, that locker room, it was excellent. Yeah. So they did a good job on that. So that was one little issue. I just wanted to make sure it was addressed and I think it looks excellent. Mr. Fox and I walked down to approve that work the other day. It just, that locker room looks great. You may get more requests with some other locker rooms.
Yeah.
Because it is, it is by far the best locker room in that building. I could tell Austin, but a few more days. But that's just, I'm just joking.
That's right.
But anyways, any questions on that project at all? Both should wrap up here real soon. Obviously, with the addition of what you voted on tonight, that that the storage building will go a little bit longer now with that leak time of that item, you know, seven, eight weeks is what we're hearing right now on on that HVAC system. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I've got.
Alrighty. So that'll conclude superintendent's information and we'll go to board member comments. Start, Mr. Chapman.
I had a great weekend with the rest of the board and Dr. Benny down in Charleston. Uh, had a great weekend with the rest of the board and Dr. Many down in Charleston. And, uh, I'll turn it over to the rest of you to talk about it.
Okay. Well, again, like Brett just mentioned, we all attended the conference. I think we, you know, did learn a few things and, um, it was beneficial. Um, I think if we keep doing what we need to do, you know, stay focused, um, and do keep working on our goals that, uh, Dr. Many has laid out, um, with the board, uh, you know, we'll not be in trouble for anything and we can continue on down the path. Dr. Miller.
Uh, so we were all down there this weekend. Um, I wanted to talk about probably the presentation that I felt was the most beneficial. And, you know, coming from the aspect of a citizen who was not in the school system, to me, when I first started, it was so frustrating to me how long it took for everything to get done and to change. And when we hired Dr. Many, he said, look, he said, you know, I've done this before. You have to give me three years to make a difference. And that's about what it's taken because we're seeing the big changes now. I, I noticed the Facebook, uh, page came out today and, and showed the rankings from the school digger, which everybody likes to look at and how much, uh, we've improved over the last few years from that. But i- in, in looking at those parameters and how public education has to improve, I, I just wanted to share with you what, uh, Paul Hardesty, the State Board of Education President, shared with us. And in his presentation, he, he had a note card. And he said that all of the homeschool rules and regulations made by the legislature will fit on this note card. He said, so the note card, that's, that's what homeschoolers have to work within. Okay, so now's the microschools. So he said all of the regulations and laws affecting microschools and what they.
Charter schools.
Yeah, charter schools, microschools, whatever, Christian schools, whatever you want to call them, um, will fit on a page and a half, the front of one page and a fourth to a half of the back page. So that's, you know, that's what they have to work within. And then he said what we have to work within. So that is the basics of the state law. Now, I didn't have the green books that he had, but those are additions and there was at least that many more.
Yeah, double book, yeah.
Okay, there were four green books in addition to the school law book. So whenever you start thinking about why it takes so long to affect change in our public schools, right here, these, every year, the legislature makes new laws. Every year, the school system has to jump through hoops to try to make sure that we're in compliance with the laws. What do the homeschoolers have to do that get the Hope Scholarship tax dollars and the microschools that get the Hope Scholarship tax dollars? So, so there's nothing fair about what we're dealing with, but this is what we have. So we have to take all of these laws and I think there's, uh, oh, I think, what did he say? How many pages here? Yeah. Yeah, thirteen hundred and something pages of school laws. And for a small county like this, who works with not only budget constraints but personnel constraints, to try to be in compliance with this constantly, which we have to do, it's an insurmountable task some days. So just keep that in mind when you're frustrated because the public school system moves slowly. Well, there's a reason.
We're frustrated too.
Yeah, we're frustrated too. It's taken a lot of blood, sweat and tears to turn around the academics in Gummer County. And it's not something that happens overnight anywhere. It takes time. And finally, we're realizing those goals that we set years ago when I started. So just keep that in mind the next time you're comparing schools.
Thank you, Dr. Miller and Mr. Frisher.
Well, I'm not going to try to apologize.
Well, I would say this evening, we paid off to the students for the carrots we offered them and they worked hard and they earned an award and we approved that tonight. So for all, all of them, when you get ready to take the tests again, just remember that you did your thing and we'll, we did ours and we will continue to do that.
Yes.
Work hard for the year. We think we have good things coming.
Very proud of you.
Any further comments, many board member? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, meeting adjourned.